Good evening. Off the next meeting of the Louisville City Council order and announced that we do have a forum present. First item is the workshops, workshop session. We'll go through the agenda for this evening. Go down to regular session. Regular session, public hearing, item one. Anybody have anything? Next is visitor citizens forum followed by the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items that need to be pulled from consent?
Mayor, we received no cards on consent.
Next is regular hearing is number four. Anybody have anything? Item five. Item six. Item seven. Item eight.
Mayor.
Yes?
I'm gonna be, after having an opportunity to talk with Councilmember Green, I'd like to nominate her to be our alternate on the DCTA.
Good idea. Thank you for doing that, Krista.
I'll just throw in there that I do have an interest in surveying in that capacity as well.
Good. Don't let them get you down. Okay, anything else on item eight? Item nine, retreat. I guess we'll go through all that when we get there. Item 10. Extension of resolution. And then we'll have reports. And what I'll do there, I will ask the city manager if she has anybody that she wants to speak up. After that, we'll go through the council members.
Thank you, Mayor.
Close session, yes, no?
We will not have a close session this evening.
Oh. Okay. Is there anything else on the agenda? Okay, well.
Eric has turned to me.
Turn it through to capital projects. Yeah, we're, go ahead.
So Mayor, I'm sorry to go back to item four on the regular.
I've already turned the page.
I'm sorry?
I've already turned the page. So, okay. Item four, regular hearing.
Apologize. The recommendation needs to be read specifically as it is stated. So whoever makes that motion should state it exactly as it's written.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Backwards again.
Let's go back to the discussion of capital projects, general update.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, what staff plans to do is to give you a update on our capital projects at a minimum of every six months. You know, sometimes they don't change that much in a quarter, but to at least take a longer look, at least once every six months. And what we have for you tonight is really what I would call the general operation side. This is not the water sewer side. We split those into two parts just because just the general side is pretty lengthy. So we wanted to walk you through a status of all of the projects. This will take a little bit of time. Staff is gonna move through it rather quickly. But please, as we move through it, stop any of us along the way if you should have questions. With that, I think that Stacy is first up.
Yes, ma'am. So we're gonna start with a little update on our CIP projects within the Parks and Recreation Department. We'll start off with our plans, move to our items that are in design, and then follow up with things that are in construction. So the first item we have up is our Vista Ridge Parks Plan. If you remember, we started that late last year and early this year with revisioning what the Vista Ridge Sports Complex and the amphitheater will look like. We paid for that out of the 4B CIP fund, and we've been working with half associates on it. And we've come to a point where we're 100% complete with the plan. It's been before Parks Board, and we plan to bring it up to city council later in December. If you'll remember, when we talked back at the city council retreat, the funds for the first phase of the project will be part of a future bonding and cash program. The next plan that we're gonna talk about is the Hedrick House concept. We are working with BRS on this plan to come up with a way that we can kind of reinvigorate the Hedrick House and get it back to its former glory. We plan to bring the plan to the city council in November with a phased approach because the first phase of improvements is budgeted for $990,000. But the scope of the whole plan will include several phases. That includes updates to the, to the home itself, but also the landscaping and the outdoor event area. The next plan we're gonna talk about is our Wayfinding and Park Signage Program. We're using the bond to fund this project. We're almost done with the schematic design of the signage that will be put out throughout the hike and bike trails and in the park system. One of the things that, things that we constantly get feedback on is it'd be, is people need to know how to use the trail system to get to where they wanna go. We recently did some prototypes at LL Woods and Garden Ridge Trail in September, October. And we had some online and field surveys out there that really informed how we can improve what the signage looks like. Our next step is to look at where the signs will go. Our target completion date for that is next February. And we're also working with the same design group to come up with some new signage out at Railroad Park to replace the old Toyota of Louisville signage out there. The next one we want to talk about is the Lake Park Master Plan. We are working with half associates on that plan as well. We're really right now focusing on the Lake Park day use and our RV campground areas. We picked half associates because they work hand in hand with the Army Corps of Engineers for developing their development guidelines for lake properties. So we're excited about that. We're considering expanding the contract to look at the commercial and marina areas at Lake Park. We'll start our stakeholder meetings for that plan in November, probably align it with the Parks and Recreation Board meetings for that, those kickoff times. And then if you remember, the funding for design and construction of what this plan will create or the, what the guidelines will establish are in the GO bonds for parks starting in fiscal year 2022. Finally, just kind of an overview of where we're heading with projects in the triangle. We're working forward on the park purchase and development there at the corner of Southwest Parkway and Keyes Drives. We're working our way through the final archaeological assessment. And I think, in fact, we forwarded up for an environmental assessment with HUD. So we're working on that. And once we get ahold of that property, we'll work towards a, a design of the park that's reflective of what the community members want. We really wanna engage the community on how we design that park and how we build it. Another thing we'll work on is the Timber Creek Trail Project. We'll fund this through geo bonds for the trails. And it'll be designing and constructing the Timber Creek Trail from Central Park east to Corporate Parkway. We're looking to work with TBG Partners, who's the same group that did the Southern Gateway Master Plan. Right now, this project is on hold until we figure out how the Valley Ridge Trail project fits into the DCTA ELAP funding, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But those are sort of some of the plans that we've got in the hopper to guide development in the future. Next, we're go to design. First project we've got up is the Valley Ridge Trail. If you'll remember, it goes from College Street all the way over to Mill Street. This is the only part of the DCTA A-Train rail trail that needs to be completed so you can ride from Louisville all the way to Denton without having to ride on a street. So we're excited about that. We're at 100% completion of construction documents. The only comments we're waiting are, are from DCTA. Like I said, we're looking to see if we can work with DCTA to have ELAP funds help build this. And once we figure out what that process will be, we'll identify a construction contractor, and it'll take us about nine to 12 months to build. The next project is the Herring Recreation Center remodel. We're working with KSA Architect for the administrative offices remodel and then Custard for the gym updates there. We're in the middle of design and have started working to see what we can do to upgrade those classrooms to, to work as our administrative offices for the Parks and Recreation Department. Our target date to begin construction is August of 2021. So we're kind of on a fast track there. And then for the gym improvements, where we're looking to update the flooring and some of the sound panels there, we're working through a job or a contract with Custard to do that. So that's starting to move right along. And as soon as we've got a schematic design for the updates to this recreation center, we'll bring them to you. The next plan we're looking at are the Green Ribbon Project. So if you'll remember, we were awarded a grant with Tech dot to build the green ribbon enhancements at the corner of 3040 and Business 121 and Valley Ridge and I-35. We're working with Kimley Horn to design that project. And we're working through PSA negotiations with them right now. We gotta, we were expecting to be told that the project would need to be delayed. We're expecting Tech dot to tell that to us. And then we got in a meeting with them, and it was just the opposite. They said we need to accelerate design and be ready to go for construction by April 2021 to keep our grant monies intact. So we're working quickly with Kimley Horn, who's designed many of these projects up and down the I-35 and I-45 corridors. And we're looking to partner with Keep Louisville Beautiful to use their Governor's Award money for design and project overruns. We're in the midst of working with KLB and Tech dot to find out if that's possible. So construction, we're at the tail end of construction at Garden Ridge Trail. Remember, that's a Tech dot grant with park development funds and 4B CIP serving as the matching funds for that. Right now, we are working through final street markings being applied to 407 or to Garden Ridge north of 407. And we hope that our target date for completion will be October 31st. We're moving down to the Kayak Launch South, which is almost complete. The pier has been installed. We're waiting on some, it got installed last week. We're waiting on some trees to be planted in medians and some hydro mulch in a few areas and looking at temporary signards and a bollard system around the entryway until development happens around the launch. But we're excited that that's finally in. If you'll remember, we're working with a local kayak and canoe group that's lobbying the National Park Service to make the Trinity River part of the national recreational trail system. And this will be one of the stops on it. And then Thrive Nature Park, working through a TPW grant funds along with, with stuff in the Thrive, the Thrive project budget and 4B CIP funds right across the street from Thrive. We're at about 65, 70% completion. Studio Outside, who designed all the landscaping at Thrive, is who designed this park. And Burns helping us with construction. The Mid and Black Crossing is under construction right now to link the two properties. We've already started our seeding of the wildflower and prairie meadows to make sure that we're reflecting the flora of Leela. And we hope that to be finished with this part of the project on November 30th. And that's it.
Go ahead. So David Solomon, I believe he's gonna take over here for the engineering project. So David, are you on board?
Yes, I am.
Okay, take it away.
First project is our Corporate Drive project, segments two through five shown on the map. We've got a, this is one you've seen a lot of activity on with regard to moving money around. The, the design is 90% complete, and we're in the beginnings of right-of-way easement acquisition. We've got about a $26 million, well, $23 million shortfall on this. And we're gonna be moving some money from segment six, which I think is a little, has a little overfunded. And then the rest of it is coming from Denton County and RTR funding through the COG. And it's gonna leave us about $4 million short that we still need to find to completely fund this project. We just did a, an agreement with Denton County for a part of that $8 million from Denton County. And then within the next few months, we'll be entering into a second agreement with Denton County to round up that $8 million. And tip mod from, for the RTR funding is in process. We estimate a start date, assuming we don't have any problems with the easements and right-of-ways. And we get all of our funding in place, so we could be under construction by next summer. Corporate Drive at Windhaven. We're getting really close on this project. I mentioned in the last slide that we think we're a little bit overfunded on this particular section. So we've got a tip mod in place or going through the system at COG, moving some of this money into the other segments. The design plans are finished. We've got a few minor easements to obtain. And we're hoping to be able to advertise for bids this winter with the construction start possibly in fall of 2021. Midway Road, this is a project where we've had a little bit of issue with, well, we've had some issues with the contractor and issues with private utilities moving their facilities. We look good so far on budget here of this project. The, we've lost eight months due to frontier communications. And then we had some issues with the contractor, but I think we're getting this back on track. And we're still looking at a completion date of June of 2021 with a substantial completion on the east end where they're working now by Thanksgiving. Levy Improvement District pedestrian bridges and trail. Got two pedestrian bridges and sort of completing the trail around the levy pond area. We look like we're good on funding on this project. We've run into a little snag with some property owners and getting easements. And so we're still working on that. But once we have those easements, this project is ready for bid. Kimber Brook Subdivision. The contractors working on Live Oak, Walnut and Sweet Gum. Unfortunately, they've been on those streets way too long. They should have been completed by now. And we're getting a lot of citizen complaint. And so we've been out there almost continuously trying to push the contractor and talking with citizens. The contractor is telling us that they plan to be complete with Sweet Gum by the end of October. I'm not sure that's gonna happen, but that's what we're pushing for. And then end of November for Walnut and Live Oak. If we project out the contract days on this project, the entire project should be done in August of 2022 using the full 915 allotted workdays. One of the problems we're having on this project is the contractor keeps wanting to open more, keeps wanting to start on more streets. And then we've been keeping them from doing that until they get these three streets in much better condition.
Mayor and Council, we also wanted to make you aware, we have dedicated one of our full-time inspectors to this project. So we have somebody out monitoring on a regular basis. And we're doing everything we can to move this project along as quickly as we can.
And that includes Saturdays as well. We've been out there on Saturdays with inspection. Our Main and Mill Street project is getting close to completion. I'm sure you've noticed some trees going in on Main Street. All the paving should be done by the end of this month. And then between, in November and December, should be mostly landscaping and cleanup. And our plans are to be completely finished by the end of December. Our Leonard Street project, we're expecting to be complete by Thanksgiving. They're, they're doing paving now, so it's moving along quite nicely. We really have had no issues on this project. South Keely, we're at 90% design. We're gonna begin right-of-way acquisition by the end of this year. We look flush with money on this project so far. And again, assume, you know, right-of-way acquisition is always a wild card. But if we don't get any big delays due to the right-of-way, you know, we should estimate construction bids in spring of 2021. Northwest Old Town Streets, you'll recall on this project, we reduced the scope just to do the utilities and drainage improvements and then do a mill, asphalt mill and overlay on the streets. And so we're still working with our consultant to revise the professional services agreement for that project. And the, the design should get a restart in December. We expect to have that PSA negotiated by then. Mackenzie Hembry, the design is complete. We're in right-of-way acquisition now. We've got a few holdouts. Seven parcels are still outstanding. We've got a couple of property owners that have been non-responsive, so we're hoping that doesn't turn into a problem. Right now, we look flush on money for that project based on the design. West College Street, the plans are nearly complete. We're working on right-of-way acquisition. Again, dependent on right-of-way acquisition, we've got a couple of reluctant property owners out there. But if, if those don't turn into issues, we should be bidding sometime in spring of 2021 for the construction. East College Street is a project that was originally funded with CMAC funding, which is a federal funding source. We recently got that converted to RTR funding, which is more local. And so what that does is it keeps us from having to follow all the federal guidelines with regard to reporting and accounting. So, and it really speeds up the design process and, and will allow us to move more quickly. We're negotiating a professional services agreement with our selected consultant now that we've got the funding sorted out. And I would expect to be coming to the council sometime before the end of the year with the updated professional services agreement to get the design kicked off. Elm Pointers and South Alley. The consultant has given us 30% design to be reviewed. So we're in the middle of reviewing 30% plans. And of course, you know, we're, staff is working with property owners already, especially on the South Alley, trying to get support for that and to figure out what they're willing to have us do out there with regard to easements and parking and all of that sort. We estimate the design completion in July of 2021 for all three of those streets. North Mill Street, this is another project where we had a huge delay with frontier communications. We just got notice within the last two weeks that they've completed their relocations. The project design is all but completed. We're working with the consultant to just wrap up the design, which should be pretty quick. We estimate that this project could be bid for construction in the November, December timeframe this year. Holfer's Prairie Road, we're at 90% design. We're very early in the right-of-way acquisition process. This, this project is gonna be very right-of-way intensive. And of course, as, as you know, we've already been visiting with you that we're gonna have to do some full parcel acquisition for this project, and there's gonna be some resident relocation involved. So although the design is already at 90%, I think it's gonna take us a while to work through all the right-of-way issues and all the relocation issues. Right now, we look flush on money as far as construction goes. I'm not quite sure where we're gonna, where the right-of-way and relocation costs are gonna take us. North Cowan Avenue, this is a new project. We've been talking about it for a while, actually since Valley Ridge punched through. We're in the middle of selecting a design consultant for this project. And we're hoping to start design in January of 2021 and with a design completion in summer of 2022. Indian Oaks, another new project, bond money was just sold. Again, we're in the middle of selecting a design consultant and roughly the same schedule as North Cowan, hopefully starting design in January and then a summer of 2022 completion for design. Valley Parkway and Civic Circle, that money was just sold. And again, selecting a design consultant. And this is a relatively simple project. So, you know, again, we're looking at a January start date for design and probably completion sometime in 2022. Our traffic signal project, this, this project includes three completely, well, one, the signal up on FM 407 is actually there already, but it's just a span wire, so we're replacing it with regular mast arms. The other two signals that are out in east Louisville, one at Huff Inns and Business 121, and then the other one at Old Denton Road and Magic Mantle, those are brand-new signals. And then the other one at Old Denton Road and Magic Mantle, those are brand-new signals. The design is complete on those. We're working through some comments that Text dot had on the plans. And once we, once we iron out those comments with Text dot, we should be able to bid this project for construction. We're hoping before the end of the year. And it looks like we're going to be pretty much on budget here. And again, probably in November twenty twenty advertised for bids. Timber Creek Erosion Repair Space Two, this is, this is an extension of the original Timber Creek Regency Drive project that we did many years ago. It's under construction and we're looking at a Timber Creek portion of this project to be completed in December. Part of this project is actually doing bridge repairs out at Fish Hatchery Road. And because of a, because of the timing of the dam construction and the Corps of Engineers contractor. We'll have a window of opportunity to get into the bridge repair in February of 2021. So we're just trying to time our construction around theirs. The next phase of Timber Creek Erosion Repair is adjacent to Central Park. You probably recall several months ago, we had a sanitary sewer that had been exposed in the bank of the creek. And so that sewer was relocated under an emergency. Since then, of course, fortunately, the sewer line was relocated safely. And since then, the erosion has increased to the point where the old sewer line actually fell into the creek. So we've really been working on this project, trying to get it finished as far as design goes. The design is finished and we should be bidding in November. Metro Park Drainage, this project is almost complete. The channel, South Business one twenty-one is completed, other than some minor cleanup and some punch list items. The little piece of most of the drainage work up on East Purnell Street has been completed. We added some inlets. And a little bit of storm sewer up there. There's a little piece of channel work between Purnell and Business one twenty-one that still needs to be completed. And that project should be completed by December. I thirty-five Phase One, the interchange aesthetics. The Corporate and Business one twenty-one, the aesthetics are thirty percent design. We're having a little bit of a delay on Main Street. Main Street is a little bit different than the other two because Main Street will go over I thirty-five. Whereas the other two, the city streets will go underneath I thirty-five. And the reason that's causing a little bit of a problem is because Text dot already predetermined the width of the bridge. So we're kind of limited on space. When we reviewed Text dot's cross-sections. We felt that we wanted a little bit more room on the sidewalks and trails. And so the only way we can get that extra room for the trails and the sidewalk is to take some space out of the median and narrow the drivelines a little bit. So what's that done? What that did was it took a thirteen-foot outside lane that was originally designed for multi-use, this was bike and vehicles combined. We've taken that down to an eleven-foot lane, plus some out of the median and made an eight-foot trail on one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other side, which we think is preferable for the bicyclists and pedestrians. We don't want to widen the bridge because if we did that, the city would be required to pay that cost difference. And that would be terribly expensive. So we're trying to fit everything in this space that they've given us. At any rate, once we've worked through those issues with Text dot, they're, they're kind of trying to wrap their heads around our, the changes that we want. They haven't committed to those yet. We're hoping they will. And so once we do that, that'll kind of break this project loose.
All right. So this is me. We're going to talk briefly about Public Services, a general fund project update. So you may recall during the budget portion here in the last couple of months, we, we did trim down what we're accustomed to in the neighborhood of five to five and a half million per year for, for street CIP planning. So we did reduce that and we're, this kind of shows what we're, we're targeting with regard to preventative maintenance. We've set aside about a hundred thousand for unexpected street failures, things that happened during the course of the year. We're going to continue our aggressive sidewalk and ADA repairs to the tune of just shy of a million. A hundred thousand sets aside for traffic signal and streetlight repairs. That's a typical year's cost for that. Twenty-five thousand dollars for screening wall repairs. That's typically knockdowns or anybody that runs into something during the course of the year. We're going to concentrate a lot on some more preventative maintenance, crack sealing, lifting low areas in concrete pavement. And that'll be a focus of trying to preserve what we have rather than, than go and full-depth repair where we don't have enough, you know, capital to do that going forward. So we've set aside five hundred thousand of that money for repairs to Main Thoroughfare's. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand for asphalt pavement repair. And then a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two to round out that three million to address work orders that come up from our customers, either that we already have as a backlog or responding to those as of yet unidentified needs. So next slide, please. So talking about the, the funding again. We do have almost two million remaining in funds from last year's CIP budget. So when COVID hit and we, we sent a lot of our folks home and then we began talking about budget concerns. We did kind of slow down our, our approach so that we have that money left that we will be using over the course of the next couple of months to also meet the goal that Donna stated during the budget to, to hold on to those capital dollars until we have a more clear picture of what the, the tax revenue might look like. So in order to keep our, our folks fully occupied, we did hold over some of those allocated funds from last year. So we'll, we'll continue those projects. The next slide is a map and we'll talk about those. And this map is horrible. I don't think you can see anything on it other than perhaps Garden Ridge. So I'm actually going to describe to you what's on that, that it's Garden Ridge, concrete repairs. It's Louisville Valley, six concrete repairs. And y'all can't see my mouse either, I'm sure. But and then down in the southwest corner of town, we've got Creek Haven. There you go. That's Creek Haven, seven divisions. So that's where we're concentrating our concrete efforts. Screening wall, I mentioned some holdover dollars. We'll be doing the Creek Haven screening wall with holdover dollars. And that is right there where that mouse is along the south side of Corporate Drive. Something that you probably can't see, there's a little blue up in the right side near Old Town. That's far, far northwest Old Town, not quite what, a little further down, Eric. Just, just north of Corp or College Street there, we've got Lester, Milligan, Harne and DeGan Streets that we'll be doing with that hundred and eighty-eight thousand in asphalt allocation. So that's kind of our, our capital streets outlay and what we're going to be doing with that money. We also want to talk about the facilities, infrastructure investment. So that next slide, we'll, we'll talk about what was allocated for FY nineteen twenty. Again, we, we slowed down beginning early in the year due to the, to the COVID. Our, our forces were really pressed into service doing other things. But we did pick that up here, June or July, we started hitting the, the capital expenditures. You can see on the top what we've completed and then below is what's in process. So we had to replace the fire panel at the, at the Annex. We replaced a, a fire panel as well as a sprinkler system in the City Secretary's Vault. We did some flooring, some workshop areas here in my, my area. The Visitor Information Center, we, we replaced a HVAC unit going down to what we have in process. We have some additional HVAC units at the Annex, at a Parks Maintenance Building, doing a number of LED retrofits. Library, City Hall, Fire Station Number Five, those projects are underway. The MCL Grand, you may recall, a year ago, we replaced, I believe it was six wooden exterior doors with metal doors. We're now replacing the remaining ones. There at the MCL Grand, we're also doing some courtyard lighting upgrades. So Eric, if you go to the next slide. This is what we've been allocated for this current budget year, the new budget year. Annex Roof Restoration, additional LED retrofits at the Annex, the Visitor Information Center. Some pedestrian access control. We have a gate here at Keely that has a key lock on it. It gets left unlocked from time to time. So we're going to put that on the security system. Also, the Police Training Facility, their sliding gate is not on our security system. It has a separate system. We're going to actually bring that on to the city's system. Water Treatment Plant, where I'm standing here, you see the water treatment plant in the background. We're going to restore the roof on that facility. So again, for that total infrastructure investment for this budget year, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. And our fleet or our facilities folks are hard at work on those projects already. Also, replacing some additional holdover vehicles. We do have three vehicles this year in, in Police Department and two here in Public Services. We'll replace those and we're able to, again, downsize two of those vehicles. And then everything will be replaced in a more fuel-efficient manner. The big project that we're working on as a department is the, is the Facilities and Fleet Maintenance Building. So again, you've seen the slide before. It's going to be down there at the entrance to the, to the wastewater treatment plant next to the Police Department Training Facility. You, you saw all of the presentation at the retreat. Just wanted to give you an update where we are. They've submitted the hundred percent SD design package, beginning on the design development. We're meeting weekly and generally multiple times a week with KAS. They're doing a great job. Kirkpatrick Architectural Services, we're, we're really pleased with them. We've included Chris Squadron with Peak Program Value. He's working with us hand in hand on the cost, trying to maintain that budget. You know, notice the budget here is twenty million, two twenty-eight, six eighty-five, what you saw at the retreat. We have developed some alternates that we're going to present and see if we can fund some of those. You know, with the cost of borrowing as, as low as it is, I've already spoken with David Herb a little bit about can we eke a little more out of that bond sale and stay at the same budgeted cost for those bonds? So we'll, we'll talk a little more about some of those alternates, probably at the next retreat. We are going with the C-Mar contracting and we do have interviews, in fact, this week set up. We've shortlisted three firms and we hope to have a successful selection of one of those, one of those firms through the process that both Chris Squadron and our Purchasing Department are helping us walk through. So I believe that is the last slide with any data. And we have some pictures here of, of the, of the facility design and rendering. So that's the exterior rendering and then the site plan and the floor plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on, on anything I presented or obviously any of the other presenters as well.
Mayor and Council, that is the information that we had for you tonight on the Capitol Projects. So do you have any questions on anything we presented? If not, we're going to move forward to discussion of the marketing, the, the marketing of our Thrive facility. We are having lots of interest and Stacy and Hillary, I think, will share that good news with you and how we're going to continue to do outreach on this facility. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. All right, can y'all see my presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Okay, so let's get rolling. And if you'll remember, we developed a marketing plan with the assistance of Brandara and we finalized it in January of twenty twenty and had various tactics for making sure that we spread the awareness that Thrive was coming and, and increase membership and participation at the facility. With brand development, obviously, one of the first things was naming the facility and creating a logo and a tagline. Getting some good photography, which we've done not only in-house, but we've also partnered with BRS to get some great photographs of the facility, but also create brand standards using the Thrive logo and tagline and how it should be used when we produce advertisement or update our websites or the like. So we have all of those in place and the, the Thrive logo has really resonated with a lot of people. In fact, we were able to get it on the, when we, when we developed the Adventureland Playground. We were able to get the likeness of the logo onto one of the pieces of, of equipment in there. We're really excited about it. One of the big things that we want to do is establish strategic partnerships in terms of creating some relationships with area fitness trainers. Creating cooperative market of plans with other organizations and partnerships with health and wellness experts like the people we might partner with at Medical City Louisville. Engage with major employers in the local area. One of the things that we really want to do is formalize a program with LISD to have Thrive be seen as their, their wellness center of choice, where they come and work out. You know, get either get ready for the school day or wind down from the school day. But we also want to look at creating some corporate sponsorship packages. And we've been working with James and his team to help finalize some of that. And a little bit of it's been delayed because of the COVID situation, but we'll be rolling that out in the next several months to really see how we might be able to get some local corporate sponsors to, to sponsor some of, of our programs or areas within the building. We also have a pretty intense online strategies. We developed a website, louisvillethrive.com. It's been really informative and, and interactive. Our team here, the marketing team here has helped the Thrive staff keep that up. We have some really good social media engagement where we, before the building opened, we, we, we send out some teasers about things that they would find in the building and around the building. And then, of course, as we opened, we weren't exactly allowed to do a big grand opening party, but we did all we could to party on, on social media. We have a big Facebook presence out there and a lot of followers. And this is one of our biggest ways to get out information. We also did, shot a set of promotional videos that ran not only on the webpage, but on our social media sites. You'll see some of our biggest park fans there playing, doing some cameos for us. We were growing our, our presence on Twitter and also looking at other flat platforms that we might extend our messages to. We developed collateral and specialty items in terms of, we were all ready to go with a direct mailer in the spring and then COVID hit. So we've held back that direct mail piece and probably send it out once we start looking at maybe doing an anniversary party once we're able to kind of gather. Again, we have a pretty nice set of brochures that have been really good for us. When we do tours in the facility, we hand a brochure to someone who's trying to make up their mind. They take it, take it home and nine times out of ten, they're back the next day. Purchasing a membership or if they didn't purchase one on their tour then. And we have some pocket folders. So when we move to the point that we have rentals back in the facility, we'll be able to hand someone who, who's looking to host an event here, some really good information. Of course, we have our swag. You can see a first recipient of our swag. Miss Karen Locke was the first to buy a membership. So she got a full swag bag back in last November. We had the plan called for a slew of special events leading up to the grand opening. And we kind of got tripped up by the, the COVID situation. So we didn't really So we didn't really get to do a lot of that. We tried to do it through social media. We didn't do actually a media day, but we did send out our press release and you'll see later in the presentation, we had media come by. Hopefully, what like I said, we'll be able to maybe get back to some of these special events and do it as anniversaries. But Hillary's been doing a great job. She's also been making presentations to civic groups. Before we were tripped up by COVID, she was out meeting with them and since then, she's been doing presentations by Zoom. And so we've had to make some, you know, obviously some modifications for COVID, but we hope to re-implement some of these strategies once we're back into regular operations. Of course, we have public relations and advertising. We did a press release, which has led to a really good series that the community impact newspaper is going to do on Thrive, as well as some of the other programs that the Parks and Recreation Department offers. We had some one thing run on one of our billboards prior to opening, our planned opening in April. And we we begged that back, but we've also been working with James and Matt Martucci to determine when would be a good time to reach out and have television and radio advertising. Maybe once again, once we get to some of those events that we want to plan, once we're in regular operations. And I'm going to kick it over to Hillary to talk about how well some of our strategies have worked and what membership looks like up until today.
Thanks Stacy. So if you remember, we started selling our memberships back November 1st of 2019. So we're almost a year later right now, but in that first month, we sold 227 memberships. We set our goal quite some time back to have 2020 memberships, annual memberships in 2020. And we'll find out how we did on that here shortly. But you'll notice the revenue, we're getting close already, just a handful of days into October to matching what we did in fiscal year 20. So it's only been a handful of days and we're doing pretty well. So on the next slide, we kind of gave you some milestones and you'll notice some of these numbers are slightly different than what was in your packet initially. We ran fresh numbers this morning, so you'll see the latest data. But through March, and again, this was right after COVID started, we had just over 1,000 memberships. And then soft opening, we gained a little bit of steam. If you remember, that was mid-September. And then between soft opening and grand opening, we saw a bump of about 500 memberships. And then as of closing business yesterday, we had 2,366 memberships. Of those, the annual membership is 2,185. So we've already exceeded what our initial expectation was, especially since we are dealing with COVID during this time. We're very excited to meet that number. So in three days, we added 135 more memberships to the Thrive pool. And to give you an idea of number of people, because memberships does not tell the entire story. We have 3,483 members that hold an annual membership. So we've seen a large number of family memberships that have been sold recently, as well as our seniors. They make up a large number, over 1,000 senior memberships have been sold. So I'm pretty excited at the results on these different memberships and we continue to work hard. We still have tours at Thrive daily. We're seeing that wane just a little bit as the initial push happens, but we are seeing tours in every day.
Take that, you can take this one too, Hillary.
Sure. So we're we're now doing a steady growth of our memberships. So again, the tours have decreased a little bit, but we are still seeing an increase in memberships. Our next big push is going to be for registering for the fee-based programs. So people are starting to learn about our free fitness classes. They're getting registered. Some of them are selling out very quickly, but we also have those fee-based programs that will be important as we move forward. They offer a different type of experience for our individuals who visit us, establishing partnerships. So we've been talking with Silver Sneakers, so that's very important as well. I know there were several in the senior community who were interested in Silver Sneakers and it's been a long time coming, so we're working through that partnership as well. So we're very excited about it. The Thrive ambassadors, right now, we have about eight ambassadors. They assist us at Thrive in a variety of ways. Right now, it is giving tours and providing information to the guests that come to Thrive. But as as COVID comes to a crawl, hopefully soon, we'll see some more opportunities for these ambassadors to help us reach out to the community and help our members enjoy Thrive to its fullest. And then we're also going to be soliciting feedback from our members. So it's very important for us to understand what they are enjoying at Thrive, what we can improve on, what they'd like to see different. So we'll have some incentives to get some feedback from our members and how we can improve moving forward. And we're just really excited at the reception we've received. We see individuals who come see us daily and they bring friends. We do sell quite a few day passes. We hope to convert those individuals to annual members or at least a monthly member so we can see them more regularly.
So that's the extent of our presentation. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So Mayor Council, this was a long time coming, but we've got it open. It's a beautiful facility. I know many of you have been using it as well as your family members. So I'm confident that membership is going to continue to grow and it's just going to get better and better. So any any questions, suggestions about marketing, anything you're hearing in general? Okay, Mayor, that's it for the workshop.
Thank you. It's it's moving forward.
Yes.
Do you have anything else, City Manager?
Yes, sir. That was it on the workshop.
Okay. We'll take a little break and we'll start, don't take, don't go very far. We're going to start at seven o'clock, three minutes. The reconvene of Louisville City Council meeting into our regular meeting. First item is being public hearing out of one, City Secretary.
Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance prohibiting the use of and contact with designated groundwater beneath approximately 49.8 acres legally described as lots one and two of block A of the DCTA Maintenance Facility Edition to facilitate certification of municipal setting designation by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality pursuant to the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act. On December 30th, 2019, the city received a municipal setting designation MSD, application from TerraCon Consultants, Inc. on behalf of Denton County Transit Authority, DCTA, property owner at 640 Texas 121 Business in Lewisville. The application was reviewed by city staff and deemed complete. The public meeting was held on October 7th, 2020, and all required notices have been provided. The city council is being asked to adopt this ordinance to support the creation of the MSD. This will allow for future development of the site so long as contaminated groundwater is not used or accessed for potable purposes. This ordinance is the applicant's first step to obtain the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality's approval of the MSD. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We have available for questions Lance Crabtree was TerraCon and Bolden from DCTA.
Okay. Is there anybody to speak?
We do not have any speakers, Mayor, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson made the motion, Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer? Councilmember Troyer?
We'll come back to him.
I think we just lost him. Did he fall off? I'll move on down the list. Council?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Hi.
Councilmember Jones?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
That's good.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Hi.
Thank you. Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, City Secretary?
Need to read the caption. Yeah. I need to read the caption. This is an ordinance prohibiting the use of and contact with designated groundwater from beneath the designated property generally described as two real properties, DCTA Maintenance Facility Edition Block A, Block 122, 640 Texas 121 Business, Lewisville, Texas, to facilitate certification of a municipal setting designation of said property by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality pursuant to the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act, providing for fewer separability, a penalty, and an effective date and declaring their release.
Thank you. Now, City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson made the motion, Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Hi.
Councilmember Jones?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Hi.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Thank you. City Secretary.
The next item on the agenda is visitor citizen form. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping defeat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor, we have one speaker, Philip, I'm going to let you say his last name.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address for the record, Philip.
Oh, yes, Philip Quarterpassi. My address is 1037 Shadowwood Lane here in Lewisville, Texas.
Go ahead.
I had a question about an ordinance that we have here. I have an RV and I guess the ordinance is you can't have your RV if it's greater than a certain length. And I wanted to find out if there's any way that we can change that. I understand it's 20 foot, you can put 20 foot in your driveway, but you can't have 30 foot. I don't understand that. I'd like to see if we could change that or, I mean, if it's in my driveway and it's not on the street and I'm not breaking any laws, how do we go about changing that and be friendlier to RV owners in Lewisville? And I briefly wanted to commend everybody else on the presentations. I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job.
Mayor, my suggestion would be that if we could get Mr., I'm going to mispronounce your name, I'm sorry, Quarterpassi, I would like, if we could have your contact information, I could have staff follow up with you and provide that information.
Okay, would you like that now?
If you want to give to me now, that'd be perfect.
Sure, my number is 214-972-6140 and I'm at my address.
Thank you so much. We will call you back personally in the morning.
Thank you so much. Great meeting.
Thank you. Okay, City Secretary?
The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless the council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or a comment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I receive no cards and I do not believe we have any hands raised for consent.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Secretary, call the roll.
Councilmember Troyer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Hi.
Councilmember Jones?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Hi.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to the regular hearings, item four.
Consideration of four variances to section 6-103, 6-123, and 6-148 on 18 acres located at the east corner of the State Highway 121 Business and West Vista Ridge Mall Drive intersection. The developer is proposing an office warehouse building and has prepared a concept plan with four variants requests. A, to allow a modified median left turn lane as shown in the exhibit. B, to allow a landscape strip of 67,752 square feet with the condition that the required canopy and ornamental trees are provided and building elevations contain 17.4% painted form liners and 0.6% quarry tile as shown. C, to allow trees as provided extending the entire length of the frontage along State Highway 121 Business and West Vista Ridge Mall Drive as shown. And D, to allow the use of natural vegetation screening at potential outside storage areas on the south side of the building not less than six feet high. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption with the condition on variance B that the required canopy and ornamental tree trees are provided and building elevations contain 17.4% painted form liners and 0.6% quarry tile as shown. Planning Director Richard Lutke is available to address any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any question? Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve the four variances set forth in the caption with the condition on variance B that the required canopy and ornamental trees are provided and building elevations contain 17.4% painted form liners and 0.6% quarry tile as shown.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Secretary, call the roll.
Show Councilmember Gilmore made the motion, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Hi.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Hi.
Councilmember Jones?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Hi.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Item five?
Consideration of a final plat and three variances to section 9.5-90 through 92 and section 9.5-95 for the plat and Old Town Development Plan for Lot 1, Block A and Lot 1, Block B, Old Town Box Edition. The development will consist of two buildings to be instructed on each side of South Mill Street. The owner is requesting three variances. A, to allow a building within three feet of pressured utility line easements. B, to allow for street, pedestrian, and utility easement on Elm Street. And C, to allow a reduced right-of-way width of 77.3 feet on Mill Street. PNC recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances and plat as set forth in the caption above. City Engineer David Solomon is available to address any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any discussion? Okay, City Secretary, call the roll.
Wait, I need a motion first, Mayor. I need a motion first.
I move to approve with the variances as shown in the in the caption.
Second.
City Secretary, be called the roll.
Yeah. Show the motion was made by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Green and seconded by Councilmember Gilmore. Councilman Troyer?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson? Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Hi.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Now we're down to item six.
Consideration of a variance to section six dash one oh three E for six point one five acre parcel located at 1206 Demons Freeway. The developer plans to demolish the existing building and construct a building to be used as a medical sterilization warehouse. Eleven alternate standards were approved by the city council for this project in September 2020. At that time, a traffic impact analysis was not available to support the deceleration lane waiver request. The applicant is now asking for a variance for the deceleration lane waiver. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. City Engineer David Solomon is available to address any questions.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, Secretary call the rule.
Show Councilmember Troyer made the motion. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Item seven.
Consideration of a resolution adopting the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power Professional Services Agreement and GEXA's Energy Commercial Electric Service Agreement for power to be provided on and after January first, 2023. The city belongs to TCAP, a nonprofit political subdivision corporation, and alliances of cities and other political subdivisions who together purchase electricity for government use. As a member of TCAP, the city is currently under contract through December 31st, 2020. This resolution is to support the opportunity for TCAP to contract for electricity on behalf of its members for the period beginning January first, 2023 through December 31st, 2027. The recommendation is that the city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Is there any questions or?
I had a quick question about this. I noticed that there was a, there was a statement in there that said that there were, there have been some cities that have not chosen to participate in this program, and I, it looks like it's, there's no reason not to. So I was just curious what, what would be the reason to not do this?
You know, that's a good question, Councilwoman. I don't know the answer to that because I think at this point, because it has those opt-outs, it doesn't really make sense to me why you wouldn't go down this road. I think in the end, it will save you money. But Dave, you may have an answer to that. I don't about whether, why certain cities might have not participated.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Yes, in conversations with Clifford, who is on the TCAP board, there's a number of reasons why a community might not participate. They might be headed by a director or a manager that had come from a non-TCAP, and they prefer going out to the market and negotiating on their own, and they feel that they might get better pricing that way. It might also just be waiting at this time until they come to a decision. Some of them are planning to take this measure to their council in October or later in October and into November. So it could be a timing issue. It could be a preference. And some of these communities, again, are also working with brokers to see if they can negotiate a better price.
What I would add to that, though, is, again, those are not valid reasons to me because what we've seen historically is that you can't really get a better price than what we can collectively. So that really does, doesn't really make sense to me. There may be some valid reasons that they have, but I think this is a good opportunity for the city to save some additional dollars.
Are there any other questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Secretary call the rule.
I show the motion was made by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to item eight.
Consideration of reappointing Councilman Gilmore to the DCTA Board of Directors and consideration of appointing a new alternate member to the board. DCTA board members generally serve for two-year, two-year terms, but on May 20th, 2019, Councilman Gilmore was appointed to fill Charles Emery's remaining term, which expires in November 2020. Councilmember Gilmore has expressed an interest and continued to serve as the city's representative. In addition, the alternate position currently filled by Assistant City Manager Claire Powell should be considered for appointment as her term also expires in November 2020. The recommendation is that the city council reappoint Councilmember Gilmore to the DCTA Board of Directors and consider an appointment to fill the alternate position as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Does anyone have any recommendations for the alternate, move to appoint Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Christian Green as the alternate, and I guess retain TJ as the, if that's what we're doing? Okay. If there's no objections.
Second.
Secretary call the rule.
Show Councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay. Thank you both for volunteering to serve on that.
Mayor.
Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank profusely Assistant City Manager Claire Powell. She has done a yeoman's job this past year, going over details and helping with, with carrying the water. It's, it's been a team approach, I think, and I hope we can continue that. We're about to see some new reports coming out of DCTA that I hope will, will, will show we're moving in the right direction. So thank you, Claire, for all you've done.
I hope she will continue to assist.
Yes, she will continue to attend the meetings.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item, Secretary.
Item nine, considerations of dates for the 2021 city council retreat. Staff is requesting consideration of March 11th through the 13th as possible dates for the city council retreat. The recommendation is that the city council finalize dates for the 2021 city council retreat as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Does anybody have any recommendations? City Manager, do you have any guidance here?
Yes, sir. So, so for the council retreat, as you know, council, we normally hold it in early to mid February. I had asked to push that out a little later to mid-March, primarily because of financial reasons. I think we'll have more information at that point in time to guide us in any decision-making that we, we might need at the time of retreat. Also, I'm very hopeful that we could have an in-person meeting, and I feel like the further I move that out, that makes for a greater possibility of that. For retreat purposes, I think it is important for us all to be together, not just by Zoom. So those were my reasons for moving it out. We have assured that the Hilton Garden Inn is available, so we could have it there, and we are also looking at some other alternatives that, that might work well with some of our ED economic development initiatives. So we are investigating some of those items, but I wanted to get the date set now so that we could start working towards options.
Do you have a recommendation, Dave?
Yes, sir. I would recommend March 11th through the 13th.
Okay. Is there any discussion on those dates or others? No discussion? Okay, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we plan on holding the retreat on March 11th, 12th, and 13th as the staff has recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Secretary call the rule.
Show Councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay. Put it on your calendars, ma'am. Now we're down to item ten.
Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergencies signed by Mayor Rudy Durham until 11:59 PM on November 2nd, 2020. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond October 19th, 2020. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, I wish we wouldn't have to keep doing this, but it's definitely necessary. The numbers for Lewisville are, the active cases in Lewisville are going down, which is great. I think our mask-up Lewisville is, is doing its job. Unfortunately, countywide, the hospitalization beds and ICU beds are not going down. In fact, they're going up, although gradually, but they are going on an upward trend, and that's, unfortunately, we need to keep doing this.
Yes, and we do need to remember that, that we're all in this together, and things don't stop at artificial boundaries, so. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Secretary call the rule.
Show Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Troyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye. Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to reports. City Manager, do you have someone to speak on any topic?
Yes, sir. We do have Dave Urb, our Director of Finance, would like to give you an update on a, an award we just received.
Okay, Mr. Urb.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. City Council, I'm excited to report news of an award received recently by the city of Lewisville. Included in your agenda packet was a letter from the National Procurement Institute informing the city that our purchasing division earned the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 2020. This is a national recognition program that has been in place since 1996, and I think if you've been on the board, you've, you've heard that we received this in the past. This award recognizes a commitment to purchasing excellence and recognizing organizations that embrace innovation, productivity, leadership, aid procurement, other best practices in the procurement field. The award process for the AEP is similar to that of the GFWA Budget Award and the Audit Award that is regularly received by the city. Currently, criteria for the award, there are eighteen major criteria and thirty-three different elements that are measured, including areas of ethics, reviewing your established policies, procedures, vendor satisfaction, there's a survey that goes out in, in leadership in the field. Ms. Baron asked me to speak on this as the purchasing division functions out of the finance department, and I do want to recognize the team that was responsible for this. Todd White, as he know, recently retired, was the purchasing manager. Tracy Ogurik, who is the former purchasing agent and now recently promoted to purchasing manager, and Josh Hudgen, our buyer, spent considerable time pulling this award together. This is a prestigious award, and it places Lewisville, I think, in some exclusive company. Some of the numbers regarding this award, Lewisville is one of only forty-six agencies in Texas and one of only sixty-nine cities in the US and in Canada to receive this award. So again, exclusive company for sure. We first received this award three years after the inception, starting in 1999. Since then, we've received the award for twenty-two consecutive years, and that's quite significant. There are only eleven other entities in the nation that have received the award in more consecutive years than Lewisville, and of those eleven, only seven are cities. So again, pretty rare air from where we're coming from. I just want to say that this is our credit to Todd and his team in putting together a successful application year after year. I'm confident that the success of our program will continue under Tracy's leadership, and I look forward to reporting again on this in 2021. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor, that's all we have on reports.
Okay. Now we're down to the city council reports. I'll start with Councilmember Troyer. Anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Yes, actually, I want to step back to the award we just got. This, you know, it's so easy to hear about this word every year and, and go, okay, we got it again, but I think this is one of the stellar awards that, that the city receives, and I hope that at least community impact newspapers listening tonight, but we need to, this, we need to be really proud of this award. It's, it's, it's a major accomplishment, and, and the numbers speak for that. It's just, you know, every year, we, when we announce this, I just, I feel this huge pride at, at the, what it says about the city that we operate. So, you know, just delighted to see it again. MCL Grand, let me segue. We have a virtual performance of Les Ballets de Dracula, which I hawk every year and tell everybody, you have to go see this. It's nothing like what you, you know, when you see that ballet, you're like, oh, I know what that's going to be like, you know, women in tutus on tiptoe. No, it's, it's a whole different show. This is a really spooky, creative masterpiece of a show and something that anybody will enjoy. It's just a lot of, of fun, and at the same time, it's, it's pretty crazy, but it's creative is probably the operative word here. Check it out, please. Acoustic Writer Songwriter Challenge is coming up on October 23rd, and I usually know what the magic word is or phrase, but I have to confess off the top my head, I don't remember. Acoustic Jams continue on Friday, presented by the Visual Arts League. They're also the ones that present the songwriter challenge. And then activities, we have a linea cut printmaking art workshop, and if you're not familiar with linea cut, it's, I guess you'd call it the modern version of a woodcut print, and the end product looks like a woodcut print, if you've ever seen a woodcut print, except that you use a piece of linoleum and carve into it, and so it goes a little quicker and it's a little less painful, and, and so it's, it's something that anybody can get into, and so that's going to be presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on November 14th, and I highly recommend that too. Art exhibits, we have Melodies of the Soul presented by Visual Arts League through October 24th, and then Circus of the Absurd presented by Visual Arts, Arts League through, also through October 24th, and that's all I have tonight. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
I am, I'm always flabbergasted at the amount of work we, we get through, so I want to thank all the staff for the, the updates, what's coming, what's in progress, where we're headed, and I also want to thank the team at Thrive and, and the Parks Department. My wife and I have been going there three days a week now. It's becoming part of our routine, and the building. My wife and I have been going there three days a week now. It's becoming part of our routine, and the building is amazing. The community that they're starting to build there is awesome, and it's just, it's a great jewel for Louisville residents. If you have not been, get out there. So thank you all for all the hard work.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, first of all, I want to tell everybody, go out there and vote. Denton County's been really breaking records, which is fantastic. Also, in this time of COVID, everybody kind of has been kind of stuck in place, stuck in the house, and we kind of, I, for me personally, I've broken out and started working out and trying to get, get a little healthier. So I got in the Camp Gladiator a little while with a mayor, Deputy Mayor Protem Green and Gilmore for a little while, also taking boxing classes at Louisville Boxing Team, which is on Mill Street now. But if you want to get, do something with the city that's free, you could, they're taking reservations that begin at six AM on Monday, where you can go to Pilates in the Plaza, yoga in the Plaza, or Tai Chi. It's limited to ten people per the governor's order, but if you want to get in those classes, make sure you make a reservation as soon as you can on Mondays. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Well, I was just going to, I was also going to, I was going to encourage people to get out and vote. I know this year we have several different voting locations that are, I think, pretty decently spread out across the city that has really made it more accessible to every, to everyone, and I, I can appreciate that very much. I, I have not heard of incredibly long lines, so, but I also know the longer you procrastinate, the more likely it is that you're going to hit those lines. So, because I did last time, and, and I stood in line for two hours. So this time, I went last week, and there was no line, so get out there. If you go to, if you're not sure where to go to, we've got the votedent.com that you can go to, and it'll show you where all of the voting locations are. And I believe during early voting, you can vote anywhere in the county. And then I also just wanted to mention really quickly, along with what, with what Brain was saying, was that there is also a fun run coming up, I believe that we're doing virtually, that would also be just a little fun thing to do, the Spooky Five K. And so you can visit the playlewisville.com page to find out more about that as well. That looks like something fun to do as well.
Okay, thank you. One thing I have a question for City Manager. Is the Haring Rec Center open, fully opened up now?
Yes, it is. I know that we were shut down for a few days. Julie can probably tell you the specifics of that, but we are open and operational again at Fred Haring.
Okay, good. Thank you. Now, do we have anything on the closed session?
No, Mayor, no closed session tonight.
Okay.
Move to turn.
Second?
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second? City Secretary, call the roll.
Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Protem Green?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Good night.